I want to thank everybody for coming this morning on a getting warmer Saturday morning. It's nice of you all to join us here at the community center to talk about the FY15 budget. My name is Wyatt Shields, I'm your city manager. And before we get started, if I could ask Mayor Tarter if he'd like to make a few introductory remarks?
Sure, I don't have any mic for anybody.
We do?
I don't have a whole lot to say, so the microphone is probably not necessary. I just wanted to welcome you and thank you for coming out this morning. It's critical to have your input and your participation in the process. It is a community event. There will be more of these. Mr. Shields maybe can give you some additional information about the subsequent meetings. We are just starting the process right now. And so it is going to be an iterative process, a number of meetings over the next six or seven weeks until we pass the final budget. But your input and participation is critical. We thank you all for coming out today. If you have comments subsequent to this meeting, you're welcome to contact myself or any other member of council. And we do have a number of them here. Mr. Dave Snyder is in the back, Phil Duncan, and I imagine others may be trickling in a little bit later on. We have members of the school board as well. Planning Commissioner Lindy Hockevery. I'm not going to introduce everyone, I'm going to let maybe some subsequent introductions by the school board folks. But we're happy you're here, and again, thank you for coming out.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. Chairman Carney, would you like to make a few introductory remarks as well?
Introduce our school board members.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. Good morning, I'm Susan Carney, the chairman of the school board. And in the back is Kiran Sharp, who is the dean of the school board. He's served the most years of anyone. John Lawrence is here, somewhere, I don't know where John. John Lawrence is here. And Justin Castillo, who's the vice chair of the school board, is in the back as well. I'm going to talk to you a little bit later about the requests from the schools, and we'll be happy to answer your questions. But also, at the end of this, if you have a question, any of these gentlemen will be happy to help you as well. So it's nice to see you this morning.
Thank you, Chairman Carney. And just to-
Do you mind if I- When it comes to the Q&amp;A period, if you will wait for me, I'm in the hot pink jacket, come over to you with the microphone. That way, our wonderful cable crew in the back will be able to record your question, which is very important for the community when they're watching this later. So wait for me before asking your question, please.
So this meeting will be taped and webcast and run on channel, or local access cable channels, so that the whole community can get the benefit of this information and the discussion that occurs afterwards. What we'd like to do this morning is just provide a presentation with some baseline information about the FY15 budget. And we will do that as quickly as we can, so that we can have the majority of the time for questions and discussion and commentary on the budget. And when we get to that point, what we would ask is that everybody, when you do have a question, just to identify yourself, let us know where you live in the city, and then ask a question or make a comment. That's our normal procedure. And I saw a hand up, and Mr. Laporta-
... for FY15.
Thank you. There's a math error right to begin with. Yeah. All right. Well, thank you for that. You're all right. So I will go through some slides first to provide an overview, and then we'll turn it over to Chair Carney for a presentation of the school board budget. Just one thing I will say right off the bat, we are a growing city. We have a lot of activity going on in the city. We'll hear about all of the growth on the school sector in just a moment. But across the city, we have increases in our population of 16 percent over the past five years, increase of 17 percent in police calls for service, youth sports participation, library programs, building permits issued. Really, take any service that we provide, and we see a big change and a big increase in the amount of demand for services over the past five years. And we've been doing that with leaner staff than we traditionally have. But traditionally, we've had staffing levels on the general fund for general government services, which includes police, wrecking parks, our building permits, all those types of government services, above 200. We decreased that by about 14 percent right during the recession. We've added some positions back strategically, but we're still about 9 percent leaner than we were historically, per our historic norms. And also, in terms of our general government spending per capita, this pink line is the city's trend of spending per capita. Yellow is City of Fairfax, brown is Arlington County, and the blue is the City of Alexandria. And so over time, you can see our spending per capita has basically leveled off since the recession, since 2008. And we have, in terms of the inner-ring jurisdictions, we are running a relatively lean organization on a per capita basis. And putting this year's budget together, the city council reviewed our revenue forecasts back in November. We had a joint session with the school board just to review those forecasts. And at that time, the council instructions to me in terms of putting together the general government budget was that our expenditure increase needs to be below what revenue is going to come from the economy. In other words, no tax rate increase for our government services. So the budget that I presented to the city council on Monday night has a 3.6 percent increase in expenditures for the general government. The organic growth in the economy is providing about 4.6 percent. The other key elements of the council's budget guidance was to maintain our focus on infrastructure. So we'll talk about the capital improvements program in just a moment. To maintain our match for the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority transportation funds, we have new revenues coming to Northern Virginia and to the City of Falls Church because of the General Assembly's action last year. But we need to provide a local match in order to access those. So in the budget, we have $800,000, again this year, taken from fund balance to allow us to do these transportation capital improvements throughout the city. And lastly, and importantly, the council called for enhanced tax relief for our senior citizens. And I'll talk in more detail about what I've proposed in the budget. So overall, again, as I mentioned, organic revenue growth, 4.6 percent. The general government growth at 3.6 percent. The school board request is a 9 percent growth over the prior year. And so we have additional revenue required to meet that of $1.65 million. That translates into 4.5 cents on the tax rate. And so I've recommended to the council an advertised tax rate at $1.35 per hundred dollars. And we'll talk about what that means in terms of impacts on homeowners' tax bills in just a moment. This is where our revenue comes from, a very heavy reliance, and for all of local government in Virginia, on the real estate taxes. And of this slice of the pie, about 20 percent of it comes from the commercial sector, and 80 percent of it comes either from apartments or the residential sector. These are all the other revenues, personal property, meals, sales taxes, business licenses, a very small share from the state and federal government, and an increasing share from fees and charges for service. Everyone's got their assessment in the mail. Those were mailed back in February. Across the board, including new construction, we have a 7.8 percent growth in the assessed value in the single-family sector of real estate. Commercial is relatively flat, but we do have the Hilton Garden Inn coming online, and so that's helping our commercial assessed value this year. And apartments are experiencing a lot of market appreciation, but also the North Gate is coming online, so we have solid growth there. Overall, 6.8 percent growth in assessed value. And of that, about a quarter of that is new construction in the city. As I mentioned right at the beginning of this presentation, a lot of activity in the city in terms of commercial investment, but also out in the neighborhoods, everybody's seeing it. additions being put on, or houses being torn down and replaced. So $53 million of new assessed value from new construction. So with the budgets that are being proposed, I've actually updated this chart. These are the regional real estate tax rates. And so if you look at Arlington up to Manassas Park City, we have a range of tax rates. The average, once you factor in solid waste collection, which is not included in the county rates, an average of about $1.29 is the average real estate tax rate in the Northern Virginia area. If you look at the towns and the smaller cities in particular, they range from $1.34 to $1.40 is sort of the range where most of the smaller urban municipal jurisdictions are located in terms of the tax rate. Across the region, with assessed value growth, we're also seeing a lot of increased pressure on homeowners' tax bills. And this slide really tells that story. In terms of, with the assessed value growth for the average homeowner in the city, we would have an increase of approximately $716 for the median home in the city with the assessed value growth and the tax increase. Of that, $442 is due to assessment growth and $274 due to the tax rate increase that is built into this proposed budget. Here's a quick overview then of all of our revenues, including the tax rate increase. And so I had mentioned earlier that organic growth is about 4.6 percent. Our 4.6 percent with the tax rate increase, it would be 7.2 percent with the major increase here on the real estate side of 9.2 percent. One thing, all of our other revenues do have healthy growth, so the economy is producing for us this year with the construction activity and other activity going on in the city. One headwind for us on the revenue side is with the sale of the water system, we no longer receive an administrative cost allocation from the water fund to the general fund. So that has been part of our financial planning, but that shows up as a loss here in terms of service charges. This is where the money goes. So just going around the chart, on the pie chart, 45 percent for education, that's the local share of our schools. And around the horn, public safety, which includes police and fire, 14 percent. Public works, maintenance of streets in all of our facilities, solid waste pickup is 7 percent. Recreation parks and a library is 6 percent of our budget. Health and welfare, planning and economic development. And then debt services is about 6 percent of our annual expenditures each year. So looking across the board then, expenditure growth of 7.2 percent as well. General government growth of 3.6. The school transfer growth of 9.8 percent. Debt service is an increase of $468,000 or 9 percent. And that's with the projects already completed, essentially the TJ expansion, a purchase of fire apparatus at Station 6, improvements there at Station 6, park improvements and that type of thing, has increased debt service, and that shows up in our budget as well. Let me talk a little bit about the proposal for tax relief for seniors. And you had a question?
What was the CIP?
The CIP is spending for capital improvements, and so we are using more in fund balance to fund our CIP this year. And so part of that is the local match for the NVTA transportation funds, which is $800,000, and then other uses, which I'll describe in just a moment, for capital investment. So with respect to tax relief for seniors, we have not updated our program for tax relief since 2002. And so what we've proposed is essentially a doubling of the funding for tax relief this year. The benefit for people up to 30 percent of area median income, and that's about an income for a family of one, of about $37,000. We would double the benefit from $2,000 of relief to $4,000 of relief. Up to 50 percent AMI would be tripled, up to $3,000 of relief. And then have a new expanded category of people making about 80 percent of area median income would be eligible for $1,000 tax relief. $75,000 represents about 100 percent of area median income for a household of one, just by comparison. For a household of two, that's $85,000. For seniors, at that income level, they're eligible to defer 100 percent of their real estate taxes under this proposal. And so the council will have a good deal of discussion about this. We haven't looked at this policy for a number of years, and so we want to obviously provide a better benefit than we have in the past, and then understand the cost of that in terms of the overall impact on the budget.
Question?
Yes, Gary.
That includes real estate tax only.
That is correct. So this is for real estate tax only. There is a program for personal property taxes as well, which we're not proposing to make changes to, but that needs to be part of the discussion. It's a much less impactful benefit, but this is for real estate.
Excuse me. Sorry, one more question. What do you mean by deferred, like defer to one?
So if you choose to defer your taxes, what that allows you to do is until you sell the house, you can just build up an account with the city of taxes owed. And then when the house is sold, it's essentially a lien on the property, and those taxes get paid when the house is sold. With the capital improvements program, we do, we plan out our capital investments over a five-year period. And so taking the full five-year period, we have investments in schools, we have investments in our transportation infrastructure, we have investments in general government facilities. This is principally the library expansion and recreation and parks, are the big components of our capital planning. For FY 2015 specifically, some key investments. In this building, we need a new HVAC system for, and other facility improvements across the general government. We would begin the Mount Daniel work. We have $1 million budgeted in the current fiscal year for planning for Mount Daniel expansion. We would fund the first phase of construction at $8 million in FY15. We would set aside $250,000 to conduct land use planning and school design planning at the George Mason High School campus. In the public safety area, we have police dispatch, computer-assisted dispatch, and investment in our firearms range, which we do together with Fairfax City and George Mason University, and further investments in our fire station down by Four Mile Run. We have $200,000 of park improvements in the CIP, and the request is for $1.1 million in the CIP to be able to go out and buy land to expand our existing parks. We do use fund balance in this budget. This is showing fund balance as a percentage of annual expenditures. And right now, we have excess fund balance above where our policy target is. And we use that in this, in the CIP for community improvements that were just listed on the prior slide. In terms of debt service, this needs to be a very important consideration for the city in adopting this budget and looking out into the future to make sure we maintain debt capacity to do some of the very important capital improvements that we need in the future, particularly with respect to school improvements. But over, we currently spend $5.2 million in debt service. And over the five-year capital improvements program, if we don't include the real heavy lift in our CIP, which is a new high school, we would be looking at about a $2.9 million increase in debt service. And that's the equivalent of about 8.2 cents on the tax rate. And so we've got a lot of financial planning that we need to do as a city to accomplish these needed capital improvements programs. Looked at graphically, if you just consider, this is our current debt service right now at $5.2 million. If we were to do no capital improvements, that would stay flat. We typically issue our debt for a 20-year term. If we execute the CIP, we will increase the debt service up to just below $8 million per our financial plan. And so we'll have a lot of discussion with the city council about the overall affordability of our capital plan and the prioritized needs that we need to address. Stormwater utility. This was adopted last year by the city council. This year would be the first year that the stormwater fee will show up in terms of what citizens have to pay. It was paid for out of fund balance up to this point. What we're trying to do with stormwater is mitigate local flooding problems that we know exist in the city. We need to comply with new federal mandates to improve stormwater quality. And we've got a very old system, most of which was built 60 years ago. A lot of corrugated metal pipe that's failing on us and causing flooding on people's property, and we need to take care of that. So we have a budget in FY15 of $1.5 million in a five-year capital plan to improve stormwater of $5.4 million over the next five years. In order to pay for that, we have a stormwater fee that was taken out of the tax rate last year, but the average cost for the average homeowner is about $250. And that's based on the amount of impervious surface that you have on your property. Just one major concept behind this fee is that by using impervious coverage as the fee base, what it does allow is, in our commercial sector, which most of our commercial sector is 100 percent paved with parking lots or rooftops. And so it is true that in this model, the commercial sector does pay, because of that, a higher share of this overall cost of capital improvements over time, and the homeowner pays, relatively speaking, a smaller share. And so that, in terms of equity, was an important part of the consideration.
Wyatt, could you just explain what's in the fiscal year 2015 budget, the $1.5 million versus the CIP $5.4 million?
Well, the, these are operating costs, which includes some pay-as-you-go for this capital, as well as bringing in some of the debt service for projects that we already have in the budget. But some of the top priority projects are to mitigate flooding on Great Falls and Little Falls, where we have, essentially every year, we have water going off our streets and flooding people's homes. We have a project working with the schools at the Cherry Avenue, Cherry Street preschool to mitigate downstream flooding from that school site, previously the preschool site operated by the Easter Seals, and other projects, maintenance projects around the city. So again, a quick summary. Organic revenue growth of 4.6 percent. General government growth of 3.6 percent. A school board request of 9.8 percent growth, and a request of additional revenues of $1.65 million, which would require a tax rate increase of about 4.5 cents. And so that is in the budget proposal, and look forward to having your comments and questions on this. But first, let's get an overview of the school budget, and I will ask Chairman Carney to come forward for that presentation, and then we'll take questions.
I'm going to apologize to you folks in advance, I have a cough this morning. This is the last vestige of the flu that I had last week. And so if I have to stop and cough, I apologize for that. But I want to talk to you about the school request.
Oh, you've got it.
I have a mic. It's on. Okay. Perfect. Okay, I'm just going to jump right into it. The budget request this year is relying on essentially two key changes or two things we need to do for schools. The first is growth, and you heard this if you were at the town hall last year. Growth, growth, growth. You'll hear it if you're at the town hall next year, and you'll probably hear it the year after, and the year after that. We have an influx of students enrolling in our schools. And for the school board, this is a little bit of a mixed blessing. On the one hand, there's not a darn thing we can do about it. The families move here, they're like my family, and your family, and your family. They want to take advantage of our parks and our schools and our walkability and all the great things about Falls Church. And once they come, it's our obligation legally and morally to educate those kids. And we have a lot of them. So if you look here, you can see the growth rate for next year, we're expecting another about 7 percent of children coming to our schools. Now, if you read the Washington Post or blogs around town, you'll see that this isn't only our problem. All the school divisions around us also are experiencing growth. Our problem is that it's a lot higher than anybody else's. You'll see in Arlington next door, there's actually is starting to tail off a little bit. In Fairfax, there's been a lot in the post about the challenges they have in Fairfax with their budget this year. You know, their growth is a small percentage of ours. So one of the key things that's driving our budget for this year is simply, we have more kids in our town, and they need to be in our schools and educated. This is actually an interesting statistic. We've never, I've never known this before. We looked this up this year because we have a lot of people in town who say, but we don't have that many kids, you know, in families. There are a lot of people in the city that don't have kids in schools, and why are we spending so much on the schools? As it turns out, in Falls Church, we do have a higher percentage of kids to population than other places in Northern Virginia. Doesn't surprise me. What is really interesting to me is if you compare, for example, with Arlington. You know, in Arlington, they have, as a percentage, far fewer children in their schools, yet if you look at their spending as a percentage of the operating budget, they spend a little bit more than we do in Falls Church, and per student, a good bit more than we do in Falls Church. So just, we always like to frame what we're doing with our budget at schools and what's going on around us to give it the reasonableness test, to see if what we're doing makes sense. So lots of growth, lots more kids in our schools. So what that translates to next year, you see the red line here, is about 172 more kids coming to us next year. Put that in perspective for you, that's about a full grade here for us with the size of our schools. And over the next three years, we're expecting about 550, 560 more kids. That's about the same number as we have students at Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School now. When my kids were in school here, and I don't have children in the schools any longer, my kids did go to school here and got the benefit of that. We had about 100 kids in a grade. We had about maybe 300 kids at TJ Elementary. We have about 750 kids at TJ Elementary now. So we're just growing, 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 growing. And you'll see that will continue over the next few years. The second key vector in our budget discussions and our budget this year is our teachers are simply underpaid. And we look at pay compared to Arlington County because they pay the best of anybody in Northern Virginia, of anybody in the DC area for that matter. And so they're beginning to take our best teachers. They're taking our best teachers that have been working with us. And this year, for the first time, we had teachers who accepted our contracts, got an offer from Arlington, turned us down, and went to Arlington. Because by driving one or two miles, they can make much more money, still in a high-performing school division. And it's not just a little bit. These are just some samples, but you'll see here for master's teachers, which are mostly what we have here in Falls Church. If you've been here for a good long while, you may make as much as $10,000 less than someone in Arlington, or even 15. The range is from about $3,000 or $4,000 a year upwards to $20,000 or $25,000 a year less we're paying our teachers here in Falls Church. And in our budget request this year, we have money to begin to make that up, not to do it completely. We have a four-year plan for catching up. And when I say catching up, I mean, oh, we'd probably lag them by only 3% to 5% rather than what we do today. We think this is critical. We're starting to see our teachers walk out the door and go next door. And it isn't just Arlington. If you'll notice, we underpay compared to Alexandria. There's been a ton in the post this last several weeks about Fairfax helps set the teachers up there. They're talking about working to the rule and all kinds of things like this because they're underpaid. And if you see, in many instances, we pay less even than Fairfax. So we, we just feel we must do something about this. This is the second important vector in our budget request, after accommodating for growth, is getting our teachers where they need to be in terms of their pay. And so with that as the background, what is the budget request? We have three budgets over on the school side, our operating budget, which is where we educate kids. This is buses and desks and textbooks and teachers and all that kind of stuff. We have a community service budget. This is where the daycare funds sit, funds for renting our facilities and our buildings and that kind of thing. That is, for the most part, self-financing. The city transfers a little money in there for daycare and for their use of our facilities. And then food service, and that is a self-funding budget. Most of the conversation happens with our operating budget. You can see here, the request is almost $45 million. And so a couple of interesting things. We have a request in- We have a request to increase the city transfers, you can see here, by about 9.7%. We're going to get an increase in funds from the state this year of about 9.7%. Now, that's helpful. But you're going to see in a moment, we get very little money from the state and very little money from the federal government. In fact, if you looked at Wyatt's slide, our little city essentially pays for everything we do ourselves through our tax dollars. We don't get money on the general government side very much from feds. We don't get it from state, and we don't get it from here. All those tax dollars that you pay don't come back to us. They go elsewhere. But nonetheless, it is helpful, even if it's only a little bit, to get a little bit more money from the state. This turns out to be about $300,000 that we weren't expecting. So that is helpful. And sales tax going up, and then you can see the other things here. In terms of sources of revenue, this should look pretty similar based on what we see on the general government side as well, right? 82-plus percent of the money for the schools comes from all of us in this room, who pay our taxes here locally. And then we see these other smaller slices going around. We do have a, continue to have a slice for user fees. That was new during the recession. Our kids who want to play sports have to pay a fee to pay sports now, which was never the case previously. They want to park their cars at school, they pay a fee for that. So we do have some user fees that we think are fair, that are continuing to be in our On the expenditure side, the vast majority of the money goes to instruction in the classroom. We're really proud of this. We work very hard, over the course of my time on the school board and before that, to make sure that through the recession and through the tough financial times, that we keep the money in the classroom, even if we have to cut it elsewhere. And if you look at these other slices, you know, facilities and transportation and health and administration and so on, we actually had a third party come do an efficiency study of this operations side of our house for us this year. We thought we were doing a pretty good job on that side, but wanted to see if there are other places where reorganizing or consolidating or cutting would make sense for us. And the results were actually two things. One, they said, boy, you're really lean. We don't recommend that you cut anywhere. I mean, for example, if you can look, we spend only 5% of our budget on administration in the schools. That's unheard of, is that low. Our head of instruction is also our head of HR. Our head of finance is also our head of operations. People wear multiple hats. So anyway, the efficiency study came back and said, first, we don't really see places for you to increase efficiency. I think they asked us to consolidate one custodial position. They had some ideas about busing, but that would have turned out to be more expensive and didn't really suit us, so we didn't take them up on transportation. The second thing they said was, we are impressed by the amount of services you share with your general government. They hadn't seen that broad and that deep a sharing of services in an institution, a local institutional government, anywhere they'd been. They'd been all over the US. So we're very proud of that as well. We do a lot with our colleagues on the city side to make sure that we both give good service and we're as efficient in terms of cost as we can be. So over the last several years, we've done a lot of work, and we've trimmed down all of these operational services. We've trimmed them down, we've trimmed them down, we've trimmed them down. The good news is, that leaves a lot of money in the classroom. The bad news is that that's the only place left to cut in our budget, is in the classroom. So anything we need to take out of our budget is going to be either pay for staff, less staff, fewer teachers. There's just nothing left. We're kind of down to the bone. We've made some tough choices in this budget, and I wanted to point those out to you. It's about $900,000 in, once again, more reprogramming, realignment, consolidation, keeping those student fees, and then reducing the superintendent's requests. We delayed the purchase of a bus. We purchased buses out of our operating funds, about $90,000. We're hopeful that that's not going to be a mistake, but we have pushed that off into the future. We're kind of pulling money from this corner and that corner and under the couch and, you know, the backseat of the car and places like that to buy furniture for new classrooms for next year, so that we don't have to have those in our operating budget for next year. And we've reduced some positions as well. And just by way of information, I would say that the biggest conversation we had as a school board in our budget deliberations this year was about growth and adding staff, and how much we could get away with not adding, where we were in terms of class sizes. When I joined this board, our policy on class sizes was 20 kids in a class in the itty-bitty grades and 22-ish in the upper grades. We increased that policy to be 22 in the itty-bitty grades and 24 in the upper grades. And we are skating at the very edge of that 24 number presently. And that's only because we had such a wonderful increase last year. Prior to last year, we were at 25s and 6s and 7s. And we had a huge budget increase last year to bring that down into that policy number, and we're skirting on the edge again, given growth. There are a lot of unfunded needs in the budget, a lot of things we didn't ask for. I think that's true everywhere you go, but there are some, and they cross all areas of the budget. I just don't want people in cities to think that we ask for every single thing we need and we get every single thing we need, because we don't frankly, nor should we probably. In terms of the city transfer per pupil, if our request is funded, we'll be in fiscal year 15 just about where we were in fiscal year '07 before the recession. So just about catching up. But that is not adjusted for inflation. If you adjust for inflation, we're spending about 17% less per pupil in fiscal year 15 than we were in fiscal year '07. So I, we've been squishing the air out and squishing the fat out and squishing and squishing and squishing. And we think we're running a lean ship. We've been told we're running a lean ship. We think we're doing, being as responsible as we can, given the growth. And that's really the challenge, as if you see from this chart, is the dark blue number going up to the right is the growth in students over the past number of years. And then the growth in funding are those pink and yellow lines. The pink line is overall spending and the yellow line is city spending on students. So we just have a gap. We continue to try to make it up. And we can't run fast enough, because as fast as we run, more children come to our school. But the request we have this year would start to get us kind of in the right place and make up for that. You can see here, it's kind of interesting from a historical perspective. This green line is the school transfer increase in percent. This red line is enrollment increases. And then this blue line is changes to city revenue. So you can see how things fluctuate over time. There have been times where the school transfer was higher than the increase in both students and city revenue. Since the recession, we've seen where the transfer was much lower for a bit. And over the past few years, we've been trying to kind of catch up. And that was because the city was in tough times, and we all did what we had to do. We made some tough, hard, hard decisions. So the increase, there are really three key components, if you break it out. One is mandated items. These are things we have to do by law. We don't have any choice about them. And they include paying for health insurance increases and retirement increases. And there are positions the state requires us to have in our budget to meet standards and qualities. So about a million of the increase we're requesting, or about a third of the increase comes just from mandated items. About a percent and a half is the amount that we're investing to begin to catch up our teacher pay. Once again, this is the first of a four-year process to get them closer to where they need to be. Our teachers still like to be here because we are relatively small school system. It feels big to us, but it feels small to them. So there are intangibles. We think if we can get to within 3% to 5%, we'll do a great job. But this is a part of a four-year program to get there. And as you can see, the lion's share of the increase is really just due to growth in students.
Question?
Yes, Gary.
So basically, that equitable pay piece is really what's, the raises that teachers are going to be seeing? Is that correct? Or is there some of that in mandated or growth in there?
So this equitable pay, our staff will get an increase this year. Part of that increase, they'll turn around and they'll pay to the VRS under law. Then we added a little layer on top, which is, just think of it as the catch-up layer. That catch-up layer is this $529,000, is that catch-up layer, okay? That's not all we're spending on all staff pay increases. That's what we're spending to catch up, okay? So finally, putting the budget in perspective, and this is something we try to do a lot as a school board. We try to give our work a reasonableness test to see how what we're doing fits with what's going on elsewhere around us. The first reasonableness test is, if you look at Wyatt mentioned, 45% of the general government expense is to schools. That is just about what it generally is. That's kind of in line with what it is here in Falls Church. I'll tell you, in Arlington, their revenue share agreement with the schools indicates a 46% to 47% spend on schools. In Fairfax County, it ranges between 51% and 52%. So we're kind of where we generally are in our own city, and we are very favorably situated compared to our neighbors, particularly when you consider how teeny we are. Arlington is 10 times as large as we are. Fairfax is 100 times larger than we are. So they both have the benefit of some economies of scale that we just frankly don't have here. Nonetheless, we're able to teach our kids and get great, great results, spending about the same part of our budget as they do in Arlington and a little bit less than in Fairfax County. If you look at budgeted spending per pupil, that's another way to kind of cut the baby. Alexandria spends a little shy of $17,000. They're about the same as what we spend here. They have the benefit of getting a lot of federal and state dollars because of their economy there. But it's, they spend about what we do. Arlington, as you can see here, spends much more. And Fairfax County spends less. And once again, I think that's because they have certain economies of scale, because they have 180,000 kids in their school division. And we don't have that in the smaller school divisions. It's kind of similar to what Wyatt was saying, that the tax rate here in Falls Church, if you compare it to Fairfax, it seems very high, but if you compare it to other cities and jurisdictions kind of our size, it's right in, it's right in there. Ed, did you have a question?
Saying, what about, what about classroom sizes in the other communities? How do we compare there?
I'm going to defer to Tony on that. Last year, we got right into the range with our neighbors. I think Arlington maybe has one more child per classroom, and Fairfax County about the same. I'm not sure, though, with this budget. Tony, do you, have you done those numbers?
Yes, on class sizes, we're sitting very similar to Arlington. Fairfax County, and I think that's one reason you see that number, their class sizes are soaring right now. And I can speak from a personal viewpoint, because my husband is a science teacher in Fairfax County. And for instance, yesterday, they were just given notice that every department in their high schools must cut one staff member, so that no class will have less than 32 students in their high school classes.
Wow. No, that goes to her. Thanks. Thanks. So yeah, I guess if you were to look at Fairfax, you'd see they don't pay their teachers well, and they have huge classes. Yes?
Yes, is I'm saying, this is operating expenditures only?
Yes, this is, yeah. That's how we compare across school divisions, since capital plans are very, very different.
Well, well, that's the question. What are, whether the, have you made any estimates of the capital cost per student? Because we're talking about $115 million in new, well, actually more in new construction in the CIP. We have some land that's, that's dedicated to the school system that has, perhaps a cost associated with it. What would be the cost per pupil, once you include a reasonable estimate or even a reasonable range of capital cost?
I don't know. We can, we can try to find that out. I would give you a couple of kind of off-the-cuff answers. First, I want to say that the land that our schools sit on is owned by the school division for the most part, rather than the city. Okay? So that's just something people tend to either not know or to forget about. So, so most of that land...
Cost.
Thank you. Is, not city land, but is, is school land. I would say also, my observation, and Tony's going to have to run this data down, is that we have invested less over the last decade or so in our school facilities, and probably maybe in the last 40 or 50 years, than Fairfax and Arlington County have. It seems like they're always under construction, particularly in Arlington. We'll track those numbers down. When we do, the way we'll let you know that answer is, we have an FAQ page on our budget sheet on our website. Every question we get, we find the answer, we turn around and put the question and the answer on that FAQ page. So if you'll just watch that, we'll let you know what it is. I would say here in the city of Falls Church, though, we have invested very little in school facilities for a very large number of years, and now it's all kind of like our stormwater. It's all kind of caught up with us. And all at once, we have a lot of 60-year-old facilities, with the exception of Maryland Henderson. The other thing I would say is, I know that, that we are, we are pleased that there is a genuine and real conversation going on in the city about what we need to do with George Mason. But I think we all are aware, and the CIP would reflect, that we're not going to spend $100 million on a new high school without some counterbalancing revenue stream or other way to help pay for it. So I don't want folks to leave this room thinking, we're going to ask you to bond $100, you know, $5 million in a few years for a high school. That won't happen. Okay? All right. So per people spending, we're pretty much where we ought to be. And so that's the budget. Any questions? Or do you want me to turn it back over to you?
Let's, let's have questions and, and comments. The purpose of this town hall meeting is to get information out, but also, very importantly, to get information back. And so we want to do that here today. We do ask that if you have multiple questions, that you let the microphone go around and not sort of, sort of take over. If you have multiple questions, we can always follow up with you afterwards, and we're available to you for that. We do ask that you state your name and your address first. And we also ask that you give your neighbors and other participants a chance to speak. I'm going to identify just real quickly some people who are going to help us answer questions. On the school side, obviously Superintendent of Schools, Tony Jones; our School Finance Director, Hunter Kimball, is in the back; the city's CFO is right next to Hunter; and Cindy Mester, who really is our staff lead on the CIP, can answer questions there as well. And Susan, thank you for helping facilitate this, this whole event. So let's have some questions and comments, and we'll just get to them as quickly as we can.
Mary Chavis, 215 Lawton Street. My question is on the growth of the students. Do you have any information on whether the student population is growing on a greater percentage basis from the new condos and apartments that are coming into the city versus the existing homes? Are the homes turning over as rapidly and generating as many new students as, as the new building construction?
Thank you. That is a great question. I'll say, one of the wonderful things that Dr. Jones has done as our superintendent since she arrived here a couple of years ago, is she has begun to track literally every student, where they come from and what those trends are. So I'm going to ask you, if you want to stand up and answer her question about where do our kids come from?
And I apologize, I don't have the chart with me today. We have handed it out, and we'll make sure we bring it at the next community meeting. But we do track where every child comes from, and really, it's from everywhere. Single-family homes, simply because there are more of them, but they're all growing at a very fast pace. Probably, I would say condos are less than apartments. We do have that factor, but it really is every element of housing that we have in the city.
Yeah. If you will check on our budget website, once again, if it's not posted there, we'll get it posted there. It's really quite fascinating to look at it and see over time. I would say traditionally, we've talked a lot about them coming from apartments and condominiums, and they've actually come from single-family homes. But more recently, we are seeing them. Townhouses are a hotbed for new children. We're watching the North Gate very closely, because to Tony's point, condos don't spin off very many children to our schools, but developers aren't very interested in building them either these days. Rental apartments do seem to spin off more children, and that will be another data point for us as we, as we take a look. But they do, they, they're coming from everywhere.
Can I have one comment?
Oh, okay. Great. Thanks. Next question right here?
My name's Pat Kennedy. Live at 300 Lawton Street. This is just going to be kind of a strange comment, I guess, but moved here with the idea, I'm retired, moved here with the idea of getting a little more land to garden, not having done much homework on the tax structure of the city. Moved here from Arlington, thought it was going to be comparable, but I'm finding that living in Arlington, I felt that I was being provided a lot more services than I get provided here. And listening to the budget, I just, I feel that the city is, the business model's trying to operate on too small of a tax base. And the only remedy I see for that would be to abandon the idea of being a city and go to either Arlington or Fairfax. I guess my question would be, as a home... I guess my question would be, as a homeowner in Falls Church City, what is the benefit of being a city versus going and either becoming part of Arlington or Fairfax?
Yeah.
Because, like I say, I hear your argument, sounds very legitimate, but it seems like everybody, the thing you're going up against is, it's too small of a tax base to try to support all the stuff that needs to be done. I mean, it scared me when I think you're talking new schools, all this infrastructure stuff and everything, so. Whoever wants to take a stab at that...
Well, let me, let me speak to it. I think that we have to always ask the question, what's the value that we're adding? And, and I think we do add a lot of value, but we always have to be aware of what it costs to do that. If you look at the smaller jurisdictions in Northern Virginia, just as our peer group, our tax rate is pretty much right there in the middle of them. So, there is, compared to the counties, there is a small government difference in terms of tax rates that you see, whether you're looking at Vienna, Herndon, City of Manassas, Manassas Park, Leesburg, all the smaller jurisdictions. But point number two is that being able to control their destiny is a very valuable thing. We are making a lot of efforts to grow our tax base, and we're being, we have some notable successes in that. One of the reasons why mixed use is something that we, an opportunity that we do take, is the market very much wants to build that, and the fiscal impact of the mixed-use projects, the Spectrum, the Broadway, the Byron, the Reed Building, the Pearson Square, all of them together have grown the tax base by about five million dollars of additional tax revenue each year. So, when the children, there are service costs that come with those, but on average, each one of those students has come with forty thousand dollars of tax revenue. So, that has been a positive trend. One of the real headwinds that we have had, though, is the loss of, of the profit from the water fund. Back in two thousand and eight, we were receiving a profit from the water fund, and that's no longer in our budget. So, that's one big driver of, of the tax rate increases that we've had. And then, two, and this is a regional phenomenon, the flatness of the commercial sector overall has meant more tax burden has been shifted to single-family homeowners, and you see that across the region as well. So, those are the two big challenges. I don't think that commercial trend is going to last forever. We have some very positive things that are happening. The Eden Center is getting a new grocery store. We have the Harris Teeter planned. We have a Fresh Market grocery store. Grocery stores are very good for the city because of the sales tax revenues that, that come to the city. So, that's a, sort of a broad overview of a response, but I think a very important question.
A lot of, a lot of benefit of living here. Give me some examples of the benefit of living here versus living in Arlington as a retiree. You know, I mean, I know people would make an argument that the school system here is better, but I don't know if I buy into that or not. I mean, I went to Arlington, kids went to Arlington. Arlington's got a good school system, so I don't look at that as, you know, the major seller for, but as far as services, you actually provide to your residents.
Well, we live in a region with very high service. Most of our local governments in, in the region do provide very high services.
I'll give, I'll give you an example. In Arlington, I've got, like I say, we bought a bigger piece of land because we wanted to garden, generate a lot of yard waste. In Arlington, I could drag that stuff right up to the street. They come along, take it, it was gone. Here, I got to bag it up and, you know, pay for the bag, for the sticker. I mean, I mean, that's a minor thing, but it's still, for me, that's something that means a lot to me, because I do a lot of gardening and generate a lot of yard waste. That's just one example. You know, as far as being kind of retired and a senior, I feel there's more opportunities for things that are provided in Arlington, because, and again, it's not the fault of the city, it's the fact they got a bigger tax base to operate from. They can offer more services. So, again, I'd, I'd really be interested in hearing specific examples of what's the benefit of this being a city versus joining one of the counties? And don't, I'm not interested in Manassas City or other cities, or, you know, Vienna or whatever, because if I lived there, I'd probably feel the same way there. I don't know. You know? I mean, sure, I could move, but I like where I'm at. I like the piece of property I've got, but it's just, as a retiree, it's getting rather onerous to live here. And I, you know, the value I find of living here is our piece of property, but also living in the DC metro area. I love living here. But I just wonder, you know, as a resident of this city, what am I benefiting actually by being in this city?
Our next question's in the back. Did you still have your question?
Good morning. My name is Louis Bono. I live at three oh two Buxton Road. Thank you very much for your presentations and the work that you put into this. Based on the numbers that you presented to us and my calculations, the average tax increase for a single-family homeowner, not including the stormwater assessment, would be twelve point six five percent. And I was wondering if you can tell me if that's correct, and also what the increase was last year for a single-family homeowner?
I, I have the chart of the dollar amount. I didn't calculate what that was on a percentage basis, but I think if you, if you do that math, we could probably do that pretty quickly. We did have a tax rate increase of three cents last year on, on the tax rate as well. So, we recognize that these costs, and particularly that the cost burden shifting more to the, to a single-family homeowner, homeowners is, is pronounced, and it's been a trend of several years.
Which is in terms of expectations for us. It's important for us to know how much of the tax is going up, how much we should anticipate those taxes going up in the future, because that becomes, comes back to the question that the gentleman raised earlier. We have to make decisions whether we can afford to continue living in this jurisdiction.
My next question is up here.
My name's Kristin Kraft at one oh two Rolling Trace. As a follow-up to the first question about the, where the new children are coming from, I'm just wondering, I would think that we have some ability to control what types of facilities are being built, why, why there continue to be condos and apartment buildings built. I have two kids in the school system, and every time I see new construction going up, we have the one on Washington Boulevard, and then, you know, whatever is put in where Harris Teeter is. You know, those are, are opportunities for new children to come into the schools and then cause this additional burden on the, on the schools.
The city does have control over land use decisions, and any time there's a residential use in a commercial district, that requires a special exception to be granted. And so, with those, the city's number one priority is to grow the commercial tax, tax base. And so, you know, the BJ's was, was something we worked hard to get that brought to the city. The Hilton Garden Inn, just as, as another example. What the market really wants to build here in terms of more dense development usually has residential component. One of the big challenges is, is parking. And so, if you're going to have more density in the commercial districts, you have to have underground parking. And to pay for that underground parking, you need commercial rents in the forty-dollar-a-foot range for an office building. And that's not our market. Our market is thirty-three dollars a foot at best. And so, mixed use has generally been our model. On the condo side, it has been unquestionably a very significant net positive fiscal impact. On the apartment side, we're, we're, we do get more service costs from apartments. There's just no question about that. If we can have a very strong, compelling commercial use with it, like a grocery store, then it will much more than pay for itself and help us grow our tax base to be able to do the capital improvements that ultimately we need to do. So, that's, that's the calculation we're making, and we watch it very closely to make sure, year after year, it's paying off for us.
We have our next three questions right here.
Festa Downer from five oh nine Hillwood Avenue. Lived in the city since nineteen fifty-two, so I know where the bodies are buried. And I live here. My two daughters went through the school system some time ago, except for five years overseas. And I continue to enjoy the quality of life of our two point two square miles, where we know all of you, and we keep tabs on you. And it matters. That's why we have a prize-winning library. We have things that add to quality of life. I think that's enough.
My name is Jennifer Robinett. We're on four oh five Park Avenue. My question is around sort of the future plan. You know, can I understand all the increase of the taxes, everything that was presented? But personally, I felt like the, the growth of the commercial is sort of lagging the other places. You can see that Merrifield and Mosaic, and you know, is booming, which was not a very good place in the past. And I understand we're building some of the stuff, like grocery stores and things like that, but, but I have the question on some of the models here, too. Like, we have three, three grocery stores already, and then we're building two more. Is there really going to generate more revenue than sort of other models, like a town center, that you can get more restaurants and things here, instead of just our residents spending here? Just kind of in general question, what are the plan for the future for commercial?
Well, you're exactly right. We want commercial activities here that are going to pull from the whole region. And our, you know, a radius around the city, there, you know, our, our models show that we have approximately, on an annual basis, one point eight billion dollars of discretionary income within a very close radius of the city. We want to pull that commercial activity to the city. And grocery stores are one good way to do that, and it's a good catalyst for other economic development around it. We're looking for better, more entertainment uses to pull in people so that they will come and have entertainment here, as well as shop at, at restaurants and other stores. But we also live in a region that has Tyson's Corner, that has Clarendon Market Center, that has Pentagon Row. We are in those concentric circles as well, in terms of that retail market share, and that's, you know, that's part of the reality of where we are as well.
I mean, what you said, the last sentence, sounds like we're giving away our spending to the other sort of counties, instead of trying to get them here.
Well, we're trying to bring it here. There's no question about what we want to have happen, but we have very capable competitors out there, which is why we need to do our economic development very well here. Very little room for error.
Next question right here.
Gary Laporta, one thirty Chanel Terrace, also board member of the Chamber of Commerce in Falls Church. Few corrections, I think. One, we have only one grocery store within the city limits that I'm aware of. That is the Giant. Mr. Kennedy, my vote counts a lot when I vote here in Falls Church, because I'm one of twelve thousand people. I lived in Arlington. My child went to school in Arlington. I moved here. I never had a child in school, but when I voted, voted in Arlington, I was one of however million there are in Arlington. One of the benefits of living in Falls Church is the closeness and the connection with our elected officials and our city government. And I value that highly. Another correction I'll make, and I forgot your name, but I do a lot of numbers work, and Tony Jones will tell you that I am a spreadsheet nut. Okay? Every mixed use, we made one mistake so far in our new development, and that was Pearson Square. However, Pearson Square per child still delivers about four to five times every single-family house in Falls Church in tax benefits. Okay? So, even the ones with the biggest numbers of rooms, three bedrooms, bedrooms, dens, and so forth. Our new ones that are coming on are basically more in line with smaller units, and hopefully they will generate fewer kids, but our return will still be higher. And so, basically, you know, if you look at some of the other buildings, we get, we get basically more money than we spend in schools and city services.
Your next question is up here.
Thank you. Is it John Limoney, three oh four Great Falls Street?
Let me hold this where you see, when I look at your notes.
Sure, thank you. I'd just like to make some comments about future revenue growth, because that's, I think that's the key to any future plans. And I know the city council in recent years has been trying to, has been trying to take a longer-term focus, and rightfully so, trying to deal with some of our infrastructure that's really deteriorated, both, both non-school, which I think is, is really deteriorated considerably. I'm not in a position to judge the schools. But as you mentioned, the, the water system is, the loss of the water system's been a big blow to revenue, to the long-term revenue growth of the city. The four percent, uh, four point six organic growth that you're projecting for two thousand and fifteen, I think it's overestimated, because it includes the tax increase from one twenty-seven to one thirty oh, 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 five that we had. So, so, and I'm very disappointed that despite all the, the development that we've had, that we haven't really had more of growth. So, we're very dependent on the, on the residential household tax, as you pointed out. Now, it's true, we've had an increase in values and appraised, appraised values in the last couple of years, but that's very recent, and, and, and I think it'd be a mistake to, to project that into the future. I just saw just a few weeks ago that Robert Schiller, who develops the, the index by which prices, real estate prices and residential housing prices for the country as a whole and for individual cities, is expecting the possibility of a downturn in housing prices this year. So, we're facing, next year, we have an unfunded transportation cost that has to be met. We've done a, a one-time drawdown out of the fund balance this year. We have a reconciliation of the real estate in the budget year. If I remember correctly, it's about four hundred thousand dollars. I don't know if that number's correct and all that, but you can correct me on that. And so, the future, frankly, doesn't look very good. We, we've already had a lot of doom, and yet, we don't see the impact on, on revenue. So, I think we have to be very, very careful in terms of our priorities, and we have to look at the past and, and, and see, see whether there's some sort of balance between, between those and, the, the, the school system, which has got such a large share and continues, and those other needs that have not been met. I, for example, I, I noticed that a couple of years ago, we were talking about, for the sewer system, we were talking over twenty million dollars needed to repair the, the, very deteriorated system that we have. Now, that's been cut in this five-year CIP to, I think, eleven, eleven million dollars. I'm sure there are many other areas of, of infrastructure that we're, we're really hurting in. You've mentioned parking. There are a lot of safety issues in the city that haven't been met. I, I'm very, I'm terrified, terrified by the idea of starting within just a few years of over a hundred million dollars' worth of, of, of school construction in this type of environment. So, I think the city council has to be very careful about decisions it makes beginning now, in terms of the impact on the future, future viability of the city, which the gentleman behind me is, is, I think, was trying to get at.
I just want to make one comment. I certainly am not the right person to answer a lot of the concerns that Mr. Lund has, but I do want to remind folks that in the city of Falls Church, as Mr. Jones mentioned, forty-five cents of the operating dollar goes to the schools. In Arlington, it's about forty-six, forty-seven. It's about fifty-one, fifty-two in Fairfax. So, while I wish schools were less expensive than they are, they aren't, and we're not overspending in Falls Church as compared to our...
Mark Goffey, I live in Whittier Circle, and I kind of want to reiterate a couple of points that the gentleman over there, sorry, I didn't catch your name, made earlier about the, the facilities and everything that we see in the city. I'm very curious, I saw, excuse me, I saw on your investments, you're making a three hundred thousand investment in a shooting range for the police, and only two hundred in recreation facilities. Now, I would think that most of the... Now, I would think that most of the people that are moving into the area would probably be people with families as a whole, and would benefit from the recreation facilities a lot more than a shooting range in a very, very low crime area. And my second kind of question is, just on the police force, I do feel, I've lived in the area like three years, I do feel there's a very heavy police presence. I see a lot of traffic stops on a broad street quite frequently, so I'd just be curious to know, based on the kind of skewed investment, what the, the cost of the police force is per person in the area?
The, in terms of the capital improvements program, your first question, the $300,000 for the shooting range is a one-time thing, and our investment in our parks is an ongoing investment. Just for instance, this year, we have $400,000 in the CIP for the West End Park renovation, or not renovation really, to implement the master plan for that park. And we also have in the CIP money for open space acquisitions, so we have more land as our population grows, to keep green, to keep in a natural state. Overall, you know, our public safety costs for the city, fire and police together are pretty comparable for the region. Our police, we have to maintain three police officers on shift at any given time, just for safety of operations. And when you factor in vacations, or an officer being off for training, that really is the driver of our shift size and our staffing for our police department. We work pretty well with our surrounding jurisdictions. We have a jail contract with Arlington County. We have mutual aid with all of our surrounding jurisdictions, and I think those things, the jail piece of it, has been a big cost increase for us, particularly the past three years. The cost of our contract with Arlington County has essentially doubled in the last three years, and we've struggled with that, and we've actually entered into a new program where we're moving some of our prisoners to Alexandria for lower costs. But public safety costs, I think, are a challenge everywhere.
Hi, my name is Jeff Robinett, 405 Parker Avenue. I have two questions. One is, what is the cost of the senior tax deferral program? And the other is, it's my understanding that compared to other jurisdictions, we receive significantly less state funds. What causes that? Why is that?
Tax relief, the budget for this year is $160,000 for the relief portion, not including deferral.
So that's $160,000 that would be collected without the program?
That's correct.
The state sends money back to local jurisdictions based on a complex algorithm, which is called the CPI, and that algorithm takes into effect its perception of wealth in various jurisdictions. The highest index you can have is .88. When you have a high index, it means you get little money. Our little city has the highest index. There are about a half a dozen jurisdictions in the state that have this .88 index. We are one, Arlington County is another, and there are some others as well. So what they do is they take that index and apply it to what you would get, and we end up getting far, far less, because the state believes that we can afford far, far more. Now, there are conversations every year in the Journal Assembly about whether that index should be revisited or not, and they, in the last few years, haven't really gone anywhere. The jurisdictions downstate would like it to be revisited, because they believe they should receive more, even of the funds than they do. And to be honest, I've had a chance to go around the state in the last few years, and I've seen the rest of the state, and where we live, we do have very good problems compared with the rest of the state. But we've flat out, are too rigid jurisdiction to get much money from the state, unfortunately.
Melissa Colm, 1005 Parker Street. What are the long-term plans for the money from the sale of the water system?
The city council is working through options right now on the wisest long-term investment of the sale proceeds. In terms of dollar ranges, we're forecasting, ultimately after all the water bills are collected, that the net proceeds will be in excess of $14 million. That's really kind of a minimum number for planning purposes at this point. When we look at those capital improvement challenges down the road, what the council is working towards is to invest those funds, to lower those costs for those capital improvements, and therefore have a lasting benefit for the taxpayers of the city. So that's the overall strategy. We're going to refine that, and a lot of the numbers that we're showing on the CIP, which look very daunting right now, will be helped ultimately by those decisions. We just need to work through the best strategy on doing that right now. We also still have revenue coming in from the water fund, so that, the books aren't closed on it yet.
That again? Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Okay.
A little bit, last question. So I just, one thing I wanted to comment is, before I came here today, I had a sort of wrong impression about schools asking a lot of money and for sort of privileged things. After hearing your presentation, I do understand your pain, and where you want to grow, and why. To me, it's very understandable. Now, I think that the problem is actually not the school, it's actually how we found it. I think as a people, we don't have kids, we have a single-family house, we see the increase of the taxes year over year, which we cannot think is gonna sustain. If it keeps going this rate, we'll have to move out. So I think my request is next, maybe in the next budget meeting, you know, if you can talk a little bit more about the commercial development, how are we planning to catch up on those? Because a part of the Arlington budget is not just because they're big, they also have lots of commercials. That's where they get most of their money. You know, Foster City is kind of like a little sleepy town, people call it, 'cause after hours is nothing going on. If we can do a little bit more bolder, more faster development, that might address the issue a lot better. So that's like more of a request. I understand you probably don't have a lot of details today. And there's, I think I had one more comment, but I probably forgot, but that's all.
My name is Sharon Scholor, I live at 1006 North Tuckahoe Street, and actually, I wanna follow on in terms of a question that you have. Wyatt, is there anyplace on the city website where you have a chart? I mean, we make predictions all the time about, you know, our population and the CIP expenses and everything, but I know you must have a chart or information somewhere about the new commercial developments, how much money you're expecting from them, and in what fiscal year you expect those to come in line, so people can understand the positive aspects of what you're all doing in terms of economic development, and not just the increasing costs, but also how you're dealing with it in terms of the, you know, the commercial sites. And then also, it's my understanding that a lot of the new commercial development apartments that you have are one-bedroom apartments, and the type of units that, and studios, the type of units that will attract a diverse population, younger population without children, and so you're trying to lessen the impact on the school system in terms of that, and also diversify the population, and make it more interesting, get more people to the state theater if they need more for leg warmers, or whatever it is. But anyway, it would be really good to see, that's what I know, it'd be really good to see some charts like that, and some information, some positive information, and get that information out. I'm sure you have it somewhere.
We do. We have a chart of all of the economic development activity over the last, really since 2003, and its fiscal impact, and also the proffers that have been made with those developments, which in total are about $9 million, including the two that have just been improved. So, there are, you know, I would submit that the city negotiates proffers for community benefits with these projects that are among the richest in Northern Virginia, certainly.
Where do you find that information?
It's on the city's economic development website. It's called, we have a chart there called our mixed-use development chart.
Are there meetings to discuss about that, like this?
Yes, every approval that goes through has a lot of public review, and so there are lots of opportunities to weigh in on those. And the planning commission has a really important role in approving those as well.
Your senior operative word, mixed-use. We're not going for pure commercial. So we're going for pure commercial, they go come in from nine to five, maybe they'll use our services, stay late, and then go home.
Sure. Well, commercial is, as I said, that's our top priority, is to get pure commercial development. And so the Hilton Garden Inn is a good example of that, the BJ's Store, the Fortune Grocery Store is gonna pay significant taxes to the city. So those are all very positive developments, and that's-
Your employees aren't gonna come and use our services.
Exactly right.
When someone coming in from nine to five-
Sure.
They'll be here for breakfast, lunch, and maybe dinner. And that's coffers into your other services or your other businesses.
We agree. We're on the same page.
Our next question is in that here. This gentleman's been waiting very long.
Hi, my name's Alex Faroaksus. I live on 301 Major Cut Through Street, Grove Avenue. Couple things I have. Mr. Snyder is aware of a lot of these. My children grew up in the school system, as did Mr. Snyder's. The schools have been under construction the entire time my school, my kids went from kindergarten to graduation. They're still under construction. There's poor planning somewhere. That's one problem I have. Multi-use projects, we keep talking about building more. We haven't filled the space that we have. Their tax base isn't supporting what they're supposed to be doing, and now we wanna add more, particularly the one on West Street, and was it Park? Wanna build a hotel there. Hotel has, have higher revenue. I keep hearing that nothing bad will happen at these higher-end hotels, but yet, motel hotels, but yet we had a big altercation in Falls Church a few weeks ago at one. Many years ago, there was a member of the city council that came out and stated he did not wanna build the infrastructure of roads for 20 years down the road. We're 20 years down the road. We have a traffic problem. It's gonna get worse. How are we gonna make that better? Any plans, overhead, underground? There's nowhere to go. There's nowhere to divert traffic to, other than Park Avenue, Grove Avenue, West Street. It's just gonna get worse. With the new development, they were talking about running a shuttle up and down Grove It was my understanding, from talking to a few of the council members, that our first major tax increase was because of the lawsuit that we had with Fairfax County over the Water Department. At one time, the city of Falls Church had a $50 million surplus from the Water Department. What happened to that? We got paid $40 million to redraw lines on a map. A lot of the elderly people that have lived here in Falls Church for a lot longer than I have, 40, 50 years or more, are being forced out because of the higher taxes. And I'd like to find out if there are any tax incentives being given to the multi-use projects under construction now and in the future. I do not know if Kaiser's paying taxes. When they were, when they came into the city, they paid no taxes. They were tax exempt. Are they still tax exempt?
Kaiser pays full real estate property taxes.
When did that go into effect?
I don't think they've ever had a tax-
Yes, when they were built, there was no tax on them.
Yeah.
That was a big controversy in Falls Church.
I don't know the history when it was first built. But generally, all the mixed-use projects in the city are 100% taxpayers. None of them have any tax abatement programs.
They're not being given any-
No.
-tax incentive to come into Falls Church?
Absolutely not. And on the other hand, they're granted, they have to pay proffers in order to build in the city, and to offset school capital costs, most notably, but a host of other community benefits as well.
Where's traffic gonna go?
Well, traffic, one thing I will just note, transportation planning is critical for any kind of redevelopment that we do in the city. Also, planning citywide for transportation improvements at noon in one-half an hour, I would encourage people to go downstairs, and we have the update to our transportation chapter of our comprehensive plan is being discussed. And neighborhood impacts of traffic is really important. There's no question that traffic counts are up, but we don't have new highways or new roads that are gonna be built. It's really a question of design to make sure that our roads function appropriately, and our residential streets are designed so that they discourage speeding and unsafe driving. But that's a great discussion to have after this meeting downstairs.
I mean, it looks like, you look at Route 7, it's Route 1 anywhere USA. And it's just gonna get worse.
Okay. What I would ask, I'd be happy to discuss all these things with you after this meeting, but I think we wanna keep the microphone circulating so other people have a chance to speak.
We're gonna go back here, and then a gentleman up there. Oh, 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 I'm losing track of my queue here.
Hi, my name is Jim Schoenberger. I live at 205 Governor's Court across the street. I have a question about the new drainage fee, why it was handled the way it is. It's handled sort of off-budget, so it's not part of the real estate tax. So it makes the real estate tax look lower than it really is, if you add that in. And because it's the way it is handled, it's not tax deductible for federal income tax purposes. What was the reason for that?
A couple of key reasons, and it's a good question. The reason it is administered as a fee based on impervious services is so that those aspects of our property owners who have the most impervious surfaces will pay the most. In other words, that's the commercial sector. And so particularly for strip malls, which might have a lower assessed value, but a lot of parking lots, the cost of service really is generated by those parking lots. And so they pay their fair share to our more equitable distribution of those costs by having it be as a fee, as it would be if it were in the tax rate. For the single-family homeowner, if this were built into the tax rate, our stormwater program would cost you about 35% more. And so we do recognize that the lack of tax deductibility, and you'll have to talk to your own tax people to really make that determination, we can't give you advice on that. But in terms of the, sort of the distribution of costs, the way that we have structured is a better deal for the single-family homeowner. And then secondly, the other key reason is, we wanted to give people a chance to lower their cost if they lower their stormwater runoff. So if you do things, put in a rain garden, or have a cistern that will keep your stormwater back, this is in the commercial sector or as a single-family homeowner, then you can lower that fee. And that's really what we want to do across the city, is have everybody participate in reducing the flooding problems that we're having, and improve stormwater quality, which we have to do anyway with EPA mandates. And so that's, those are two principal rationals for the fee structure.
As a follow-up, I mean, it seems reasonable that you have a fee dependent on the amount of drainage generated, but you don't do that on other things. You don't charge the schools. If you don't have any children, you don't pay less taxes. So why do you do it on that?
Well, there's a movement towards this pretty much across Virginia and throughout the Chesapeake Bay, where we have these mandates that you have to pay for. And it's partly just due to a transparency. You know, these stormwater pipes, if you're not, you know, calling it out and showing what you're investing in it, it tends to fall off the budget, and so you don't make the investments. That's really been our history, and the history of most local governments. But two, by having it as a fee, we're accountable for it. And so you'll know what you're paying, and we'll hold ourselves accountable for making improvements to the stormwater system, and doing what we need to do on stormwater.
Our next question is up here.
Good morning. My name's Dana Kaufman. I'm a resident of 444 West Broad Street, that's the Spectrum condominium. 24-year resident of the city. We used to have a single-family residence at the corner of Highland and Northwest Street. Sold that about three years ago, moved into the condominium Love. The way that property was planned by the city- The way that property was planned by the city, whatever input there has provided, it just makes it a great place to live. So I just really appreciate all the background and the work that was done to make that a very walkable, livable part of the city. I have two questions I want to follow up on, and just a brief comment beforehand. So the recent assessment went up, and then our property tax rate will go up. And I don't remember those two things going up at the same time in recent history, so that got my attention. That's why I'm here today. And as I've heard the different comments related to the school budget and to our city budget, I just wonder if there are some things that could be possibly reduced, and I think specifically about the capital improvement projects, you know, whether those could be pushed out a little bit. And so when I heard your comment about, you know, the water funds and impact that might have, my first question is, will that be resolved, you know, fairly soon, such that that might have a favorable impact for this year's budget? And then in terms of the school side, my second question is, with the new high school, could you just talk a little bit about why that need is so immediate and some of the specific things that having a new high school would address?
You want to guess?
I would just say that the goal with the use of the sale proceeds is to provide a lasting, recurring benefit for the taxpayers, and so to address these capital things. So what you're thinking, so long as it's being used for the capital side of it, I think it's aligned with what the council has already laid out as its policy goal. So that's my response to your question. Whether that will show up in FY '15 budget, still needs to be worked out.
All right. With the Georgia Mason High School, let me just say a couple things to the community about where we are with that project, what we think the timing might be and why it's so important. Harking back to probably four or five years ago, the school board did an overall facility study. We went to every one of our buildings and we looked at it stem to sterns, top to bottom, side to side, in terms of its age and usability and when it might need to be repaired, replaced, things having to do other with just more kids. And at that time, the feedback we got on the George Mason building in particular is that it is inefficient to operate. It is difficult to secure. I think it has 56 doors in and out of that facility. The systems are so old that some of them, they don't even make replacement parts for anymore. And we were creeping up at that point on being overfull in that building. Now, since we expanded TJ and we moved the fifth grade back to TJ and the eighth grade out of that building, we've bought ourselves some time in terms of simply the building being too full. But we still have the challenges of old building, hard to secure, can't get parts, you know, systems are bad, and so on and so on and so on and so on. At this point, for the George Mason project, we don't know when that will come online because it's going to be quite a lengthy process with a lot of community engagement to get to that point. There are a couple of things that we do know. One, it's going to be expensive, but we don't expect to bond all that money without some sort of counterbalancing revenue stream of some sort. And we're looking very much at that right now. There is a joint working group or a committee made up of some school board folks, some city folks, and someone from the planning commission that is meeting at 7:30 in the morning on an almost weekly basis right now. And our goal within the next probably four to six to eight weeks, I'm not sure how long it's going to take us, is simply to determine what the process will be for figuring out what to do with that property. You know, with the sale of the water assets, that property that George Mason and Maryland Hendersons sit on is now being annexed into the city, so we have the ability to zone it and build on it. There is one restriction we have, which is 70% of that land needs to maintain its use for educational purposes for a long, long time. But there is 30% of that land which could be developed in some way to create revenue streams for the city to counterbalance the cost of those educational facilities. So there, it's a big project for a little place like ours. There are a lot of moving parts with two schools and some land, two-thirds of the land is school land, a third city land. We have UVA and Virginia Tech next door, who are educational institutions. There may be something to do with them. There are a lot of moving parts. So we're just starting right now to decide what is the process to figure out what to do with that land so that we get both good educational facilities and best and highest use economically for the city for a long, long time from that property. This is a multi-year project. This is a long, long time. That high school may not come online until four or five years from now. We're just going to keep packing the kiddos in, you know, the way we always have until we can get to that. But at the end of the day, if we're able as a community to accomplish it, we'll have a facility that is more appropriate for the kind of 21st century learning our kids are doing, as well as hopefully for community-wide uses. That's an important part of our conversation, is the community, because in our schools, almost all the time the kids are not presently. We want to continue that and if not, expand it. So stay tuned. There's a page on the city's website, on the school's website, where, you know, we put the minutes of these meetings we're having, and you'll hear an awful lot about this. But our, we're going to move, and you're going to laugh when I say this, deliberately with haste, to figure out a process to get this project done so that it works well for us. Is that helpful?
Our next gentleman's over there.
Good morning. I'm Justin Castillo, 306 North Virginia Avenue. I'm a parent, part of the problem, although I'll be contributing to it. One of my daughters is graduating this year. I'm also on the school board. And getting back to the question, I think the budget always raises the question of why, why does Falls Church exist? And I think the conversation we need to have isn't what's in it for me, but, you know, why Falls Church? My good friend John Lawrence, the other day, was talking about during the snowstorm, there was somebody on a, I don't know, even secondary, probably a tertiary road, who had a child in a wheelchair. The road hadn't been plowed. Call went into Mr. Shields and pretty much instantly, that problem was fixed. I don't think you'd get that in Fairfax County. I also think we need to realize, we've had these problems before. In 1960, anybody want to guess what the percentage of kids under 19 in Falls Church was? Percentage-wise? It was 42% of the population was underage 19. Right now, it's 25%. So we've seen this movie before, and we've tackled these problems. We're really looking at a, not once in a generation, but once in every other generation problem, both with respect to stormwater, 60 years old, and George Mason High School, which we've known would be 60 years old for the past 60 years by now. I mean, you just do the math. And so I think we need to realize, we could be part of Fairfax County and our kids could be periodically redistricted. We could have much less autonomy about our future. We wouldn't know who our elected officials and staff were. But I don't think that's why we want to be in Falls Church. I think the other problem we have is, we are lean. A mediocre education is not much cheaper than a world-class education, if at all. It's not the money that generates the quality. It's the culture, and it's the community. So those are some thoughts I would throw.
There was someone on the side of the room, I thought.
In terms of the, this to Ms. Carney, in terms of the sources of revenue that you're discussing, what types of, for financing in new school, what types are being contemplated? I know this is a very early stage. I can envision three. One is some new development on the 30% of the land. Another is on the education, on the 70%. Are there any educational facilities that would be generating, that would be self-sufficient or actually generate a surplus? Third, how much do you contemplate in terms of tax revenue?
Thank you. I would say, only between the lines, sorry.
Or new taxes, I should say.
I would love to have the answers to your questions, but I don't. It's still early days. One of the important vectors of the planning process will be the funding and financing plan. And we're honestly trying to be as open-minded as we can be about this going into it because we don't want our preconceptions to limit our opportunity on this particular thing. So if you were to stand around my kitchen at night, where, you know, most of you know me, know my husband's a commercial real estate developer, he has lots of ideas about how this might work, but that's just one man's opinion. And what we're trying to do in the city is put ourselves in a position with the right people, that means the right people from the city, the right experts and consultants who know how to do this, working with us and guiding us so that we begin to get answers to those questions. I think right now, it's wide open. The only thing I know is we're working hard to get the process in place, and I don't believe that anybody believes that we're going to bond $100 million and raise everybody's taxes by $100 million to do it. There has to be a different, better, more creative way. You know, if you talk to folks who are in this business, there are instances in other local jurisdictions of schools being built by developers as a part of what they do to get access to some land to development. There are land leases, there are land sales, there are joint ventures, there are lots and lots and lots of opportunities. We're just at the beginning point, so stay tuned.
Well, it's more of an answer than a question. There was, there was.
This is Jeopardy?
This is Jeopardy, yeah. There was a question about, you know, what are we doing to increase revenues and where the revenues are coming from and so forth? And yes, a lot of it comes from the single-family homes, but as a good chamber member, basically in the, in your big book of the new budget, real estate taxes have gone up 9.15%. Some of that is commercial. Personal property taxes went up 11.76. A good part of that is commercial because commercial pays for everything we use, knives, forks, cash registers, display cabinets are all charged as personal property. Sales and use taxes up 6%. Utility taxes 10.5, which we pay a lot of. Meals taxes up 5.78. Other sales and use taxes are up 49.5%. Gross business receipt taxes are up 7.52. And I would like to know where I can invest my savings to get that kind of return.
That includes rent as well, and so, you know, there could be, unfortunately, investment returns are not actually all that high.
Your next question?
Just a hypothetical question. If I could magically give you $5 million a year in extra revenue, would you use it to reduce the tax rate or would you buy more things?
We try to live within a resource-constrained environment. And so, you know, we have really since the recession, you know, I think all of us in the city government together have worked a lot to reduce costs. As I indicated, we're 10% less staff today than we were in 2009. And so the taxpayer says, well, why am I paying more? I hear what you're saying, but why am I paying more? And the real, the short answer is that commercial valuations, just in terms of market appreciation, has been pretty flat, and that's because of the recession. And then the changes on the water fund. There was a structural change to our budget. We addressed it back in 2011, and that's, you know, that's part of what we struggle with still to this day in terms of that revenue being gone. But we do have big opportunities going forward. We are really trying to expand the tax base with prudent economic development. And we have an opportunity with the boundary adjustment that will help us solve our capital improvements challenges, as well as the sale of the water seeds, from the water system, the net proceeds from that sale. So to answer your question, we do have over $14 million of additional funds. And I would argue strongly against using that to reduce the tax rate for a short-term, one-time benefit, but instead to invest it for a long-term benefit for the taxpayers and renewal of some critical infrastructure needs that we have. We have promised to finish up by noon, also to let people go to the transportation planning session, so we're still here. If there's still additional questions, we'd be happy to answer them. I would like our council members have an opportunity to speak and maybe say a few closing remarks, Mayor Tartar in particular.
Sure, thank you very much. We've had Karen Oliver join us as well. So you have, the majority of city council has been here today because they're very interested in what you have to say. We've listened, I've been in the back, as the others have been, and we've tried really not to participate so much, but really try to hear your input. There are many opportunities going forward to offer your input, and I would recommend that you continue to stay involved in the process. Your opinion does matter to us all. Feel free to email us or to contact any of your city council representatives. We're here on your behalf and would love to continue to speak with you and continue this dialogue. But thank you again for your participation. Appreciate it. Anything else from anyone? Let me turn it back over to Wyatt, thank you.
Budget at Falls Church, will you email?
Yeah. And one thing I would note, the budget is available on the city's webpage, as well as this presentation and a whole bunch of other information, so you can go there and get that. In terms of value to the taxpayer, this involvement in Falls Church, we have the highest number of elected officials per capita of any jurisdiction in Virginia. And so your views matter, and they will be listened to. And I thank you for coming out today and participating in the process of having a budget ultimately the community accepts and the council will vote on on April 28. So stay involved. We will do this again on April 5, and we also have a public hearing on a Monday, eight days from now, Monday, March 24. And so please participate in that way as well.
Thank you. I just want to let folks know, if you want to know more, 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 more about the city, I mean, about the school budget, there are a number of city groups who have gotten together, the Democratic Party, the Republican Party, the CDC, and some others, to sponsor a forum on the school budget on April 3 at 7:30 in the city council chambers. And I will be there, and Dr. Tony Jones will be there, and a school board member, Lawrence Webb, will be there, which should be very interesting because he's spent time on city councils, now on the school board, so he's kind of seeing the budget from both sides. So if you have interest, please come and listen and ask your questions. We pride ourselves on being open and transparent and sharing about what we're trying to accomplish on the school side, financing and otherwise, and we'd be happy to answer your questions.